Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the May 16th, 2019 edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. We now call to order at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that's recording tonight's meeting? Hearing none, seeing none. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. And our first item on the agenda this evening is, we have a 7:00 PM hearing. Applicant Ray Bonneville requesting a variance under Section 5.3.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow for relief for the frontage requirement of a Hammerhead lot on the construction of a single-family dwelling on property located at 23 Sunrise Ave., Auburn, Mass., MAP 8, Parcel 12, and this is a continuation from 418. So I would motion to open the hearing.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Bonneville.
Yes, good evening.
Can you give us an update on your situation?
Yes, this is a continuance of last month and the Honorable Chair remembers, I had my engineer draw up some plans here. I did submit some to the town. Last week, my engineer called me and said, "Hey Ray, here." So, if I may, I'd like to give everybody one.
Please.
I know you guys have been over the phone, but...
I think if you want to pass it out, then we can talk about the difference between what we have and what you're presenting us with?
Exactly.
Through the chair, I believe the board has the new plan unless it's changed.
Okay.
Also, bigger radius.
She and I will share one.
Okay. Well, you did give me a laugh.
I'm good, thank you.
These are the changes that go along with the plan from the engineer that is legally describing the issues that are at hand.
Thank you.
Okay, so just for the record, we have a letter on hand from the Auburn Fire Rescue Department of Captain Gregory Moran, who is the Bureau of Community Risk Reduction and Fire Prevention Division. Stating that he's reviewed the plan for the cul-de-sac at the end of Sunrise Ave., dated 1/22/19, prepared by Burton Engineering of Southbury, Mass. The turning radius is adequate for the needs of the Auburn Fire Department. This does not exempt you from any requirements that may be required by state, federal, or local rules or regulations. This includes but is not limited to the Town of Auburn bylaws. Second page was from Burton Engineering and it is basically revised wording for the plan that we're looking at right now and we'll turn that into the Department of Inspection and Services for public viewing if anybody is so interested. Okay, so I think while they're looking over the plans, if you want to go over what was changed, then we can sort of listen to what's going on.
Yep, okay, to the Chair and Honorable Members, we had discussed about having an emergency turnaround here and have it so that it was going to have an easement for the town because it was a good idea that I don't own it. So what we did was, we made the turnaround to road standards, town standards, and it is 120 feet in diameter and the changes that were made are listed here, okay? One of them, which is, it's only going to be deeded for one home. There's, and that's what the purpose of all of this was, was just to put one. The other one, the other which was talked about was the cost of doing it. That would be solely on me. The other which is, if you refer to number seven, is to general notes. Seven was added, which reads, "The roadway easement predicted herein provides a right-of-way diameter of 120 feet," which it is, as required by Town of Auburn subdivision rules and regulations, Section 4, 2-7-5, right to be granted to the Town of Auburn for the roadway purpose. Lot two, which is the Hammerhead lot, okay, on the plan, the lot label was revised adding a Hammerhead lot, shall now, shall not be further divided, see Note 6. The purpose of this plan is to, excuse me, divide property owned by Raymond G. Bonneville and Marty K. Bonneville, being lot 12 on Assessors Map 8. Created one lot, this plan also creates Lot 2, which is the Hammerhead. Lot 1 is my primary residence. Again, I've been living there for 20 years and it really is a beautiful location as to not put in a subdivision, but as required by the Town of Auburn zoning bylaws, Section 5-2-3-9, a Hammerhead lot shall not be further divided. At this, at this time, I'd like to think that I got all my ducks in a row and asking Grant that we allow this to put in and my next mission is to go to the planning board, which I do have a little hope, but again, whatever they request, we will deal with then.
Okay. Mr. Cussie, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so we still just have 20 feet of frontage, right?
Exactly. Well, the, the road is divided by two on a private road, so it would be 40 feet, to my understanding, that the other 20 feet, since we're on this side of the, of the lot, as Caleb had described, the neighbor does own 20 feet of that road. I own 20 feet and the other 20 feet would be consisted on the roadside.
Now, this radius, is this all going to be paved?
Uh, to, yes, to, to what the planning board, now that's the plant, yeah, I cannot answer it at this time, but I would like to pave it. I would like to pave it. If, if the planning board says that regrinds is, is what's there, is what's required, fine, if they want me to pave it, I'll pave it. I don't have, I don't have any problems with that.
All right, so what you're saying is 20 feet on the other side of the road?
Exactly.
You counting on...
That's going to be, that's going to be the access and exit of this home.
If I may, through the chair. This is a subdivision. In subdivision rules and regs, the definition of subdivision is a division of a tract of land into two or more lots. So he's creating two lots. I'm not quite sure why he would need, if he creates a subdivision, I don't know why he would need an easement because it says that the length of the cul-de-sac is 279 The other issue with granting an easement to the Town of Auburn, easement would need to be granted to everyone on the street. You can't construct a cul-de-sac and only allow the town to use that cul-de-sac. So I'm a little confused as to what the application is because I don't see that he needs relief from the frontage requirement anymore. I think he just needs subdivision approval from the planning board.
I was, I thought we were going to bring this up for conversation, so technically, I think we're right now reviewing something that does not follow our jurisdiction, is that correct?
That is my opinion, yes.
So in order to move this from this board to the planning board, I believe that we would have to just close this hearing, agree maybe per vote that we no longer need to see this particular set of plans, and then he can move on, as I ask very carefully with the question?
Yeah, I don't see how the board has any jurisdiction over subdivision.
Right.
That's exactly what this is. Whether he, whether he has to pave it or not, this is a subdivision.
And that would all be site plan approval regardless?
It would be subdivision rules and regs. The planning board would review that, peer review, most likely.
Excuse me, to the Chair. The reason why the easement was to be put in place was so that I couldn't stop them, anyone, from entering that. The easement would give the town and also anyone driving down this road a way of turning around and not allow somebody to say, "Hey, listen, you can't drive around here." Yeah, you can, but you can't, but, you know, it, it, it can't be allowed. I talked to the engineers about it and he was, he was saying, "Well, Ray, address it, address it." Because it is a very, very important point on having the town have an easement, but they do, they, they won't uphold the responsibility of, of putting it in and maintaining it because that would be, you know, solely to me and I don't mind that at all, but if that's the rules of the planning board, then I will address that.
Right, but I think what you're missing here is, our conversation is that being advised by the building commissioner, that now this, this situation is in what they call the subdivision rules and we don't, this particular board doesn't govern over subdivisions, it's not in our charter. So what we're discussing right now is the fact that we just have this hearing open, we may all review the paperwork, agree to close it, and you might just move on to the planning board without having to even be heard here.
Thank you.
I think that's because of the way you've changed the application, you follow a different set of rules now.
Yes.
So that's what we're going to look at.
Thank you.
Just going to go around the horn, Mr. Cussie, do you agree with what we are talking about?
Absolutely, yep.
Mr. Chikolo.
I do believe so.
Mr. Aaron?
I agree, this is out of our purview, this is a subdivision at this point.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
Yeah, I, I would agree.
Okay, Ms. Blaze?
I also, yep.
Okay, so what I'll do is take a vote that we agree on that, we'll close the hearing and he can move on. So do I have a motion?
Through the, through the Chair, if I may, the simple solution would be for the applicant to request a withdrawal.
Well said. So, sir, if you could just request a withdrawal, we can just close the hearing and you can take all of this additional information and paperwork to the next planning board meeting.
Okay, withdraw, thank you.
The board would need to take a vote on that, just, just so that he has the ability to reapply in the future.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the applicant's request of withdrawal?
I'll make a motion as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Do you want your paperwork back?
He may want these back to get to the planning board.
If you can neatly put them back together. Looks like grabbing Christmas presents for me, I was never good at that either.
Small one, too. Just in case he needs paperwork.
We're getting closer.
We want to, yeah, we got it closed.
There you go.
Is that for the next one?
Yeah, I would give him that. So do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, good luck.
Mr. Bonneville?
Do you want the rest of your prints for the planning board?
Excuse me?
You passed all these prints, do you want the rest of them for the planning board meeting? We don't need them.
We don't need them, you can take them, if you take them, then you can bring them to the planning.
Spending money to have...
Yeah, spending money on copies and...
There you go. Good luck, sir, good luck.
Yes.
Thank you.
There's the rest of them.
You as well.
Okay. Moving on, we have the 705 applicant, NJ Realty Trust, requesting to amend a special permit under Section 4.3.5.1, Aqua for Protection and Overlay District of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the renovation additions to the existing building and parking areas on property located at 519 Washington Street, MAP 56, Parcel 3, to have a motion to open the hearing.
Motion open.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, Attorney Broder, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, well, thank you. With me tonight is Brian Marchetti from McCarty Engineering and we're here representing NJ Realty Trust, the owner of 519 Washington Street, and this is the Patrick Family Auto Dealership that's existing, which is currently the Volkswagen facility. Just a little bit of background, the facility was built in, in 1995 and has been in existence since that time. Formerly had SOB in there with Volkswagen, SOB is no longer. So this is a project that's coming before you, which, which Brian will go through the site plan details on, which is an expansion and renovation of that existing dealership in order to relocate Volvo, which is currently on Gold Star Boulevard, to this site. So it would be Volkswagen and Volvo. You've heard from us a number of times on some proposals and we've talked about the Mazda dealership down the road and this is in addition to that. So Mazda's still coming and Volvo would be coming to this site if we get all the approvals that are necessary. The reason we're here is in 1993, the board granted a special permit to do automotive sales in the Aqua for 3. So the proposal here is to amend that special permit. Excuse me, it's, it's, you know, a program that Brian will go through and explain some of the details on. We've been to Conservation Commission because there is a little bit of a wetland on site, so we can talk about that and we'll be headed to Planning Board as well upon completion of this process with you folks, hopefully. And, you know, we'll go through whatever necessary steps with them. I'm not sure if this will be a peer review project, I'm guessing it will be, and in all likelihood, we'll go through that at that time. So I'm going to have Brian walk through the site and the changes and we're happy to answer any questions after that.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Brian Marchetti, McCarty Engineering. So the site as it is, is being redeveloped under the Massachusetts Stormwater Guidelines. The site basically has to meet all the regulations to the maximum extent practical, up to what's existing and impervious. Anything beyond, that's beyond the scope of what's impervious, needs to meet the standards fully. So the redevelopment here is an expansion to house both Volkswagen and Volvo. So on, on either side of the facility, there are service aisle bays that are being added to it. Beyond that, in the rear of the facility, there's about a 3,500 square foot addition that's service bay oriented. The additions required to meet the minimum standards of the dealerships. And in addition to that, we're expanding the parking area. So with the increase in impervious area, what we've done here to accommodate the revised grading and the revised layout and expanded parking throughout the facility is completely redesign the stormwater management system. So what was constructed on site back in the early 90s doesn't necessarily meet the current regulations, so the entire site is being upgraded to meet and exceed the minimum standards of the 2019 bylaws. All the new service bays inside the building have drywells and, and floor drains, everything's being collected within the building and routed through a sewer as required by building code. The existing facility had two surface at-grade basins, one up on the, along the frontage on Route 20 and the other one on the south end of the site. Both of those basins, because of the expansion, are being relocated underground, which is a requirement of the Auburn regulations. And in doing so, it's creating more area for parking and car storage, but it's providing a higher level of treatment and stormwater volume control, which is an important factor being in this Aqua for District. Apparently, the utilities that serve the facility will remain with minor upgrades, as I said, with sewer on the property, but we're tying into all the existing facilities that currently service the facility. So the, overall, it's a significant improvement. It's, it's, the pavement out there was, was broken up and kind of settled here and there, so being a redevelopment, the entire site is going to be redone, it'll be a whole new face to the facility. There's a new landscaping plan and lighting plan that's being updated, so it really is advancing what you see out there today. And, and yeah, I just want to stress that it's a significant improvement stormwater-wise over what was out there existing. So as Mr. Broder said, we've submitted to Conservation, we've submitted to Planning Board, Conservation, we've had one meeting. It was continued, just pending additional review, but we fully expect that the meeting in another week or so, we should be able to close the hearing, so.
Do I have any abutists present this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I thought. Are you finished with your portion of the presentation, sir?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Broder?
Just one point to add, just to the, to the additional background. NJ Realty Trust did purchase, and I wanted to just bring up this point, some acreage in the rear of the site, I think it was around eight acres, that was carved off of 104 South Street. We came before the board previously and had proposed some, some extra parking in that area and that area is not going to be developed as part of this project at all. So what you see here is existing 519 Washington Street. It is an expansion of the parking areas, Brian said, we're able to capture some additional pieces of the property as a result of the drainage work that's now going underground and some other changes, but this does not impact that, that portion of the property that was purchased, that was a chunk of 104 South Street. So that remains, you know, untouched and there's no plan to develop that. So this, though, does allow Volvo to exist on site. It needs extra parking, it's currently constituted, it wouldn't be able to, to manufacturers on site, and they have particular requirements about inventory on site, which is why this is proposed the way that it is. So it's really, it's, it's quite driven by the manufacturers in that sense, in terms of what inventory's on site and what the buildings look like and feel like. I'm sure you've seen that around town, the Hondas, dealerships, et cetera. I mean, that's a program that the manufacturer institutes and they say, "This is what you're going to build." So that's partly also driving the scope of the project, excuse me. So I just wanted to make that point about the additional property, that's not part of this, that, that piece of it remains as is, so.
Thank you for pointing that out, I appreciate it. Okay, so usually, we'd like to hear from the abutists first, so if you want to do that.
Sure.
Okay, would either of your abutists like to speak?
Sure.
Okay, sir, if you could just approach the microphone, give us your name and address and, and speak to your concerns.
How are you? Mike Schullinger, 12 Diane Ave., directly across Route 20 from Patrick's. I heard you mention that the lighting scheme is going to be touched, or upgraded, or changed, or whatever. First of all, let me say, Patrick has been a very good neighbor. A quiet dealership, a handsome dealership, and so forth. My only real issue has been with the lighting that is currently on site. From my house, I can visually see the lighting, as opposed to, say, for instance, I guess it's Lux Plus, which is the next dealership over. The lighting, I can see the stanchions and so forth, but at least the lighting, to some extent, is better shrouded. I don't know if this is the right format or the right board to mention this, but...
Actually is.
I got the notification, so I thought I'd be here. I know in past that certain boards require, for instance, a lighting plan. I'm not familiar with a lighting plan, I'm not familiar with what information that boards require in a lighting plan, but at one time and place, these light stanchions were put up and they broadcast beyond the property bounds of Patrick's.
Okay.
I find the same holds true particularly for Lux Automotive as well. They have certain lights that they've mounted to the side of their building which just light up the entire neighborhood. My only concern.
No, and duly noted, I would appreciate that if that was my, if I was living in that area, that would be my primary concern as well. Let's, if you'd like to respond to the lighting concern, sir?
So there are, the, the existing lighting on the entire facility is to remain. There is, there are, I believe, three or four light poles that are being added, as it evolved over the parking field in the rear of the facility. You can see here, this is the existing facility as it stands today. This limit of dark green here is tree line along the backside and right up here in the front corner, you can see where the existing detention basin is, one of them. So for the proposed facility, there's impervious area being added up here where that existing basin was for vehicle parking, or showcase parking. So there are two light poles being added up here and there's one light pole being added along the backside here, all the way in the, the rear of the property. So, you know, besides building facade mountain lighting, there'll be, I think, just three of those light poles added. I think there wasn't a photometric plan done with them, but they are, you know, shielded LED lights. I believe the town does have a bylaw about light spillage, so that standard would have to be met.
So one of the things we've had with other dealerships, and I won't mention which particular one, but very accommodating to the neighbors regarding the light plan, so most of the light actually shone or shined back onto the property rather than going across or out into Route 20. I think if something like that could be managed to help that situation, that would be appreciated certainly. Directional lighting these days have improved quite a bit. Any members of the board want to speak to that, Mr. Cussie?
Yeah, I would just want to see shrouded lighting, but...
If I may, through the Chair?
Yes.
So the lighting would be under Planning Board's purview when they go to site plan? So the lighting would be under Planning Board's purview when they go to site plan. Given the extent of the alteration, I would think that this would go off for peer review. This board would just be looking at the drainage and things that affect the Aquifer.
I know we discussed it in the past and that's why I wanted to bring it up, just to make sure.
Yeah, just to speak to it, I think the, and Brian's point is that the old, they're old light poles. They're from 95 or whatever. Standards have changed, you know, what people are utilizing has changed and they will, they will all be upgraded to be, to meet the current standards. As Caleb said, I'm sure we'll have more conversation about that at Planning Board, but to answer the question, those lights will be modernized.
Okay. Thank you. So, sir, you don't have to go back up, but does that satisfy your requirement that the issue is known and will be dealt with in the next board's hearing?
Well, I guess it does. I'll be attending to the thing anymore in the next meeting.
Okay.
So I'll get you here in a little bit.
Thank you. So for the record, the neighbor did say that they were attending the next meeting and their concern was met. Sir, would you like to speak?
Yes.
If you'd just come up again and introduce yourself, tell us what your concerns are.
My name is Joe Shinadlib on 129 South Street. Linda Boisel and Paul Maroni couldn't be here tonight. They're out of the country and they're the immediate abutters. So I told them that I would come and share their concerns. First and foremost, it's the lighting. Okay? You're my straight man. Okay? I didn't ask them, never met the gentleman, okay? But we're extremely concerned about that. Going back to our previous meeting, Paul and Linda's primary concern was the lighting. I've been at their house, okay? You can read the newspaper, okay, at night.
We've been talking about it.
Okay? Now, I understand, I understand.
It's not primarily...
All right, I'm sorry, I can't have you add to the conversation at this point.
I mean, all of the dealerships on Route 20, okay? And I understand that they have to have, you know, luminaries, okay, to protect their property at night. I understand that. But all night long, okay? And do we have to have them 20 feet in the air? Okay? The cars and vehicles aren't 20 feet tall. Okay? So shrouding and, you know, reflectors and all that. And yeah, we'll be at the Planning Board meeting. But our primary concern is the lighting and I'm glad to hear, okay, that we haven't expanded the footprint of the dealership. Okay? So what it is now is basically what it's going to be. Is that what I hear?
The exception of some additional parking in the rear and some water management, that's pretty much it, right?
But we're not clearing, we're not clearing into the new property that they just...
Attorney Broder was clear that he said they will not be touching that land they purchased behind the building.
So I need to hear for the record.
Okay.
Can I have a question?
You may, please.
Can I just ask, if you'd like to point out where our claim properties, where they're moving and they're getting the... There are... They're up, they're up the South Street and they own all the way back to where it came from. Basically, they're like, you know, penny's house, they're like pennies, all the way up, all the way down to the water, all hundred feet and so on.
Just wanted to make sure we understand each other. The dealership facility itself does have a footprint expansion to include the service bays. I just didn't want to mislead, but it is entirely on the 519 Washington Street proper piece of property that was, you know, former ownership. This is nothing on the new piece that was just purchased.
Thank you for clarifying that again. I appreciate that.
Just going to the stockade fence, correct? Stockade fence that is there?
The plan that I wrote is that they take the stockade fence down.
I just wanted to clarify because I wasn't sure if that was the absolute end or not, but it is.
The stockade fence is right on the property. We're not going to say...
Is that fence going to be replaced or...
We're not showing it back down to that except whether it's replaced. I don't think so.
The work doesn't go up to that. But the plan says it's going to remove the stockade fence. It's clear trees, the limit of proposed grading, remove and dispose of existing fencing. Is this, which plane is it? I don't know. I think it's from the town hall.
I have here in the packet that says, existing stockade fence to remain, protected during all phases of construction.
If I may, through the chair, landscaping and buffering would also be reviewed during the peer review and looked at at Planning Board.
So I think what Caleb was talking about, we've heard your concerns, but we really are concerned with the Aquifer protections. That's where our sort of jurisdiction lies. We do allow for those concerns to be brought up. It kind of prepares the Planning Board when they review these types of meetings. And we've heard the concerns, but really, like as Caleb was mentioning, we really don't have any jurisdiction over that to rule on anything at this point.
Your jurisdiction does go for the existing footprint.
Correct.
Into the expansion.
Correct.
And I heard it was, it's going to be on the existing footprint.
Correct.
Okay. And the fence and the lighting, what makes that the planning?
Right. And I just was, I was just trying to check the plan because I wasn't sure how far back the fence was towards the property line, but it is at the end of the property.
Right.
So this, this development does not go beyond that point. Okay.
Any other questions?
I have one. The snow, what do they do with the snow on this lot? This is a big, big lot. I don't, I don't...
There's a, the plan set?
The plan set does show on the layout materials plan areas for snow storage. So on the south side of the property, there's a significant parking field for vehicle inventory. So in the event of snow storms oncoming, they move vehicles around so they have locations for snow. So there's a large snow storage area shown at the southern edge of the site. There's snow storage areas shown along the eastern border and as well as the western edge of the site. Depending on the winter, you know, it's case by case, but sometimes, you know, places like this.
Correct. I think all the operations made is, they probably, you know...
Probably makes sense that if there's too much snow on site, they can't have enough inventory on site, therefore they'd be trucking the snow offsite to make room for the cars.
Mr. Chacolo?
Yes, thank you. Are you adding to the impervious surface anywhere on this spot? And I'm talking to the Aquifer.
Yes, we are adding impervious to the site.
Where?
Look at the existing property. We are adding some impervious along the frontage of Route 20. The existing detention basin that's up here and down here, we're expanding over that basin and we're putting it underground. So we have...
Are you expanding into the Residence A portion of this lot?
There's, yes. We're not, we're expanding it along the backside, but within the property line.
So that if I look at the plan that you're holding up right now in the main entrance, let's call it north, let's call that north.
Yes.
For the sake of convenience, on the southerly side of that property, as you're holding it there.
Yes.
Are you expanding into that area, which would be the Residence A zoned area?
We are expanding the impervious on the southern side of that property, yes.
How much?
To, I mean, you could, the limit of the property is this dark black line, connect straight through here. Here's the property line.
Yes, yes.
So we're extending it, I would say, the closest point maybe up to about five feet from the limit of that property line.
I'm asking the questions because on the plan here that we have, it looks much larger than that. And the stacked, the three car stacked storage area looks like it's all in the Residence A.
This is in the Residence A. The resident, the zone line runs right along the backside of the building.
Okay. Now, when this, was Residence A part of the new purchase of land?
No. The new purchase of land is south of this dark line. There's 8.9 or so acres south of this tree line down here.
Thank you.
That's the new parcel. So all the development is occurring on the existing parcel.
All right. And now, another question. Will you be touching in any way, shape or form, clearing trees or doing anything like that on the area that, for the sake of convenience, I'm going to call it the buffer area between what you have on that plan and the area of concern that we spoke about for the last time, the last time? Will you be touching any of that buffer area?
I just, I'm not 100% sure I understand the question fully, so I just, can you just repeat that?
Yeah, on the other side of the fence.
There's no portion of the other property is being touched as part of this development.
And I do notice that you have plans to move one of the lights, which is speaking to the other gentleman's concern, move it further back, but that is not for us to take care of here. Thank you.
Mr. Mann?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So how, what's the increase in impervious area?
If I may, through the chair while he's looking for that, just, just so the board's fully aware, this property falls within Zone 3, so there is no restriction on impervious area for this parcel. The special permit is strictly for the use of automobile sales.
So if I may, the, the existing impervious area on site in its current state is 3.01 acres, which is 65%. The proposed development increases by .6 acres. So from 3.1, 3.0 acres to 3.6 acres. So it increases from 65% to 78%. So it's a, it's a little over half an acre.
Doesn't matter, it doesn't matter on other, other. Thank you for looking that up. I appreciate the thoughtful response. Doesn't sound like it falls in the preview of what we're going to be looking at. But I'd still like to ask the question because this is an Aquifer protected area. So, I mean, is the primary reason you are increasing by design to increase parking?
Building and parking.
Building and parking. Can this be done without doing that? I know you have the right to do it and I know that impervious isn't something that we're going to regulate here, but I'd just like to ask the question if it can be done without it.
I don't think we can meet the parking demands of the new dealership. And I really want to stress that the existing stormwater system was constructed in the early 90s. It did not meet the minimum standards of the DEP Stormwater Management Regulations. So we were completely redesigning the stormwater to meet the current and exceed the current standards. So the stormwater system that's proposed out there today is significantly better than what was out there before.
Appreciate you entertaining the questions. I don't have anything further, Ms. Chairman.
Ms. Roach?
No.
Please.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. So if we have nothing else to add, a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the application?
I would make a motion to grant.
On second.
Okay.
With standard conditions.
With standard conditions, correct. All right, so we have a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Cussy?
Hi, Grant. True.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Okay. Ms. Roach, you did it already and myself, I approve, so good luck, gentlemen. Hope it goes well.
Thank you.
You.
Okay. A motion to close that hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have some signatures for decisions. We have the 125 Oxford Street Troy's Sports Bar and 94 South Hold World Bay State Performance And while we're doing that, we have the, are the minutes ready to be approved?
February, March.
Okay, so we have the minutes for February 21st and March 21st. So a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes have been approved. Just for the record, the next meeting is June 20th. We'll sign our decisions.
You're absent. You're absent for two? You were absent for two meetings.
April. I was absent in April. Are those all decisions from April?
Yes.
Yeah, single meeting, multiple decisions. That's right.
Thank you, sir. Pass those down. Okay, and that's our last order of business for the season, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.